I just wanted to commend the, um, the Wareham County Hockey Team. They've had such a great season and, um, we haven't met in a long time as, as a body, but there's been a whole bunch of games and they had a tough loss, uh, Tuesday to Bishop Fean and they played really well, but, but Bishop Fean took, um, the team spirit, the spirit, you see there, um, it's, it's, it's really come a long way.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the report of the student representative. She's not here this evening, so we'll move on to approving the minutes of the meeting from February seventh. Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Okay, next on the agenda is FY twenty budget update. So, welcome, Susan.
Good evening. Be very short and sweet. We, um, we've met as a budget subcommittee and gone over some of our priorities and kind of reorganized. So, some of the things you'll see on the worksheet, um, we had initially, um, recommended that we would increase the athletic director to full-time. Um, I've highlighted the changes in blue. Uh, the add one point oh guidance counselor, the add one point oh dean, the add the point five out of district, and then, um, based on what we were hearing and prioritizing, um, past presentations that we heard from Dr. Chum, um, we've added eight point five paraprofessionals, I believe at the lower levels, kindergarten levels, um, because that seems to be where the focus is. And then if you look below in blue, you'll see the reduction. So, we, we removed the request to add the point five athletic director. Um, we removed the add of a one point oh guidance director. We removed the add of one point oh dean, which I believe is already in place. And then we removed the point five out of district team chair because we've added it this year. Um, and that's how we made up the difference to add the eight paraprofessionals. Up at the top in blue, you'll see originally it said town contribution was going to be about two hundred thousand. Um, as of this morning, we received an additional one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, so it's now three sixty-eight, four nine one. Um, overall, we're, we're still at a shortfall of about seventy-one thousand dollars, um, but we're down from two hundred and thirty-four. So, um, still work to be done, still conversations to be had, but, um, we're moving right along. I don't know if there's any questions?
Thank you for your work on all of this, you and the superintendent. It, it, the little green light's on. Okay? Okay now? Okay. Um, and I apologize if maybe I missed it because I was in on the discussions, but I'm confused with the, with the blue, the increased athletic director to one dot oh and then down below, remove, uh, point five increase of athletic director. Did I, did I miss something?
So during the budget subcommittee, I think we talked about that.
Yeah. So, so the net, the net is going to be what for the athletic, athletic director?
We're, we're not going to add a point five for the upcoming year.
So it's going to stay point five?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's neutral.
You got you.
Any other questions?
Where does this leave us in terms of a students to guidance ratio?
Good question.
Where does this leave us with respect to the students to guidance counselor ratio?
Uh, currently, the ratio with the guidance, um, association would be two hundred and fifty, so we're still well, we're still within that, um, guideline. So we have three counselors at the high school, that's what will remain at the high school.
So you're saying the guideline is two fifty to one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the high sc- the high school is?
Five.
Little, little less than six hundred?
Yes.
And we have three guidance counselors there?
Mm-hmm.
And at the middle school?
Um, there are two guidance counselors at the middle school and, uh, five hundred and forty, fifty. So you're still right at that, but you also have so- social worker, you have behaviorists, so there's other people that.
When, when do guidance counselors traditionally get involved with students? I mean, you don't have guidance counselors for first graders, right?
We do.
For first graders?
Mm-hmm.
You call them guidance counselors?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
No.
Yeah, don't, that's something new. Okay.
Because you have them on, how many times there'll be children that are on IEPs that require counseling.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking of a really different kind of person.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes, as part of an IEP, you have counselor.
Right.
Yes, I get that. But I mean, but, but for regular education students?
Yeah.
They have access to this.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so if that's the case, what is the ratio for, for the?
For the elementary?
For the elementary?
You know, I'm not really sure about the elementary, I'd have to go and look that up. In the elementary, we have one guidance counselor in each building. We also have a behaviorist in each building. We have a social worker in each building. Um, so there's, we have.
Psychologist?
Psychologist.
Uh, psychologist. We also have a social worker from Gosnell in each building, so there is quite a bit of social emotional support from our students.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an acceptance gift.
Yes, I would like to recommend the committee accept a gift of forty dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Gibbs for the stage back chat program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Next, adjustment of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school calendar for the Wareham Middle School and mine at Forest School.
Yes, unfortunately, we'll be extending three days at the end of the school year for the middle school students and mine at Forest students, so that would take us from June thirteenth to June eighteenth. So I'm just making the committee aware of that, that we have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, the next is a discussion, um, about the school calendar for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Yes, I'd ask the committee to please approve the school calendar. Uh, we'll begin before Labor Day. It will be a half day and then we'll have a full day. We have Labor Day and then we'll start on that Tuesday. The process for this calendar has been, um, in-house at central office, we looked at it, the administrators looked at it, we went to the association, they were, were their E board and it has been, um, approved, so I can bring it to you for your approval.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I didn't compare to last year, but does, to the current year, I mean, uh, does it differ? It doesn't differ at all, does it?
Not really. You know, I'll, one thing though, that I will point out, this year, we, we're supposed to have four days of school at the beginning and because of the heat, we went to half days. What we really found, it was lovely to bring the students in on a half day, get them oriented, and then, um, it really, it made a difference. So we're going to mirror one of the days for this upcoming calendar year, um, just because it, it was very beneficial. Other than that, not much change.
So this August twenty-eighth is a Wednesday, so there's a half day, then a full day, and then Friday is no school.
Correct.
I'll just echo what I said the last time we did it. I just think whatever we did then, we need to kind of stick with and not change it around, so I'm happy to see this.
And also, happy to hear that it's, it's been vetted throughout those groups. Looking to approve this. So if there are no more questions?
I'm moved to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Thank you.
And now's a list of obsolete equipment.
Mm-hmm. So you have two lists of obsolete equipment. One is from the multi-service center, um, then an addition with the middle school, a television stand, and then a mine-it inventory. So I would ask you to please declare all of this equipment and furniture obsolete.
So, vote. Second.
Um, I just would like to repeat that, um, the superintendent has reached out to many organizations in town. There's been a, a great effort to donate any of this, um, equipment. So I just want to make that clear before we take that vote, so. Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Can I ask a question about it? So are these items still available? Because I, I do know, I think I was talking to Maria LaPorte and she might be interested in looking like at desks and some of the stuff that you have here.
Yes, please have her get ahold of us ASAP because we're now down to crunch time. Um, we anticipate in two to three weeks, we will start looking at bringing people in to look at the mine-it, um, building for bid preparation. And so we need to have this all out by then, so if she could get ahold of me in the next few days.
All right, yeah, I'll follow too.
Perfect. And next is the report of the superintendent.
I would ask that you please approve the payroll and the bill warrants. One additional payroll, February twenty-third, in the amount of one hundred, five thousand, one hundred, thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, and a bill warrant, March seventh, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred, thirty-four, fifty-eight cents. So I would ask for your approval.
So, vote. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Today, I think around six o'clock, Desi released the dropout rate for last year. The high school was two point nine or thirteen students, they had reported as dropped out. The night school had seventeen point five or eleven students. But what I would also share would be, two years ago, night school had a sixty-six point seven percent dropout with thirty students, so they have decreased the dropout rate dramatically in the last two years. So, you know, um, there's some really nice programs for the students to take advantage of at the night school, and we'll have more information for you about the dropout rates. Um, open house on March fifth for the eighth grade parent at the high school at six o'clock. I would really urge people to go attend, walk around, see what is offered for the students. And March sixth, meet the coaches for spring sports at six o'clock at the high school. And March eighth is early childhood screening, so we have some very important things coming up in the next several weeks. And that completes my report.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are we going to also, um, talk about at some point, school choice and how many are going out and?
Yeah, I think we have a report that we bring to you.
Okay. And do, um, do we still send out surveys to parents that have left?
We have, and we also have had our, um, administrators call them.
Okay. Because a lot of families said they never received one.
I sent a letter home this year to every parent.
In the past, did it, did it happen by email or?
Um, in the past, we would have sent home. I think we've missed one year, but we've had our, our administrators reach out to families and try to, um, have a, a conversation. That doesn't mean that they'll return the phone calls or anything.
And I think it's important to say too, the, the open house next week at the high school, that's for eighth graders. It's not just for eighth graders who are at the high school now, it's for any eighth grader who wishes to explore Wareham High School, whether they're there now or not, it doesn't matter, it's open to the public. So, and they, they work really hard to put on that program, so I'm hoping that they have a good turnout there. Yes?
The, um, school choice is a, is a big financial drain on the town, and I know the town administrator in, in his budget presentation, um, talked about those dollars. Um, the bad news is that it's a much bigger number than it was, um, than fifteen years ago. Um, the good news is that even though his, yeah, for those of you who like, um, acronyms, there's a wonderful acronym called CAGR, which stands for compound annual growth rate. And in the town administrator's presentation, he talked about, uh, and, and showed the compound annual growth rate for, uh, school choice at over thirty percent. That's a huge, huge number for a compound annual growth rate. Uh, the good news is that that may be the compound annual growth rate for, um, the last decade or so, but from, um, e- get my fiscal year's correct now, um, from nineteen to twenty, um, it's much less than that. So maybe we have started to turn the corner, uh, with respect to that, but it is, and it's very important that we do.
Just, just to follow up on that, the, um, the town admin- I watched the town administrator's report and, um, and he hit it, he nailed it. It was, we, we started losing everybody when we lost that first override and, um, and that's when there was an exodus, really. And I think since then, there's been a lot more value in the community, a lot more interest, a lot more involvement, hence the new school. So I think things are really turning around and the, the attitude's changing, and that's why I think things are looking better next year.
And that is confirmed also by the Upper Cape numbers as well. Um, we used to lose consistently forty to fifty kids and have seventy kids applying to Upper Cape, and those numbers have been cut in half for next year. Um, and that's an indication of good things at the high school.
Which goes, just goes back to what I said about, um, you know, being able to attend that open house and see, because I feel like in the past, maybe decisions were made without getting that knowledge, you know, based on perceptions, and so that's why it's important, um, to attend them like that.
Um, I have one more item. I had the pleasure of meeting high school advisory this week and sat and listened to what they had to say about with their survey. One piece that they felt very strongly about was bringing the late bus back. So we've been looking and, and seeing where we could possibly come up with some money to do the late buses, and at this point, we would like to be, um, bringing late buses back one day a week. We would start March fourteenth, and it would be for the high school, the middle school, and, um, see how it goes. But that was something that the students felt very strongly about, so we would like to support their efforts and, and reinstate that.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's really good news, and, and when you, when you had mentioned that, I was happy to hear it. I thought it was for next year, when we discussed it, I was really, really happy to hear it was starting this year, so I know a lot of parents that really, really miss that, not just the students.
Jeff?
Just a quick, uh, and maybe the budget subcommittee or Susan knows the answer to this question. Also on the, uh, the town administrator's presentation of, of the town budget was a graph that showed Upper Cape's budget. And it is like this. Uh, I think the difference between this, this year and next year was round numbers, a couple hundred thousand. Do we have any idea whether that's all operating expenses or is there any capital associated with that?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can get you the answer to that. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Because as a percentage, it's so far above what we're asking for, and if they have capital needs, sometimes it gets locked in, uh, but if it's not capital needs, what's going on?
Well, it's the same, it's always that way. Uh, I mean, we're. Agreeing?
I'm just, I understand that, but whether it, whether it gets passed or not, I still think we should get an answer to why it's accelerating at such a rate.
Okay. You're right. All right, well, thank you for sharing that news. Are they aware of it or they're not aware?
We're going to s- yes, I, the students are aware that we're going to, uh, start and then it will be announced with the student body.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the school committee. Jeff, do you have a report from the legislative breakfast?
Yes, um, and I apologize to the people out there, uh, we tried to get this to show up on the screen, as some of you may be aware, and we didn't succeed. Uh, so I will try to verbalize some of the things that, uh, the committee has in front of them. Uh, I will tell you, I've been going to legislative breakfast for, uh, a decade or more, uh, and I always, uh, went with some optimism and left with frustration. Uh, and the biggest reason for that was because, uh, the legislators basically were there so that they could be seen, but they really, really didn't say anything that was going to be particularly helpful to anybody in the room. Uh, so for the first time in over a decade, I actually came away hopeful, and I will explain why. Uh, but there's one thing that wasn't helpful. Fortunately, it doesn't apply as much to Wareham as it does to the rest of the Cape, and that is, prior to the legislators, uh, doing their thing, there was a demographer who, um, talked about, uh, basically the last decade, I actually was listening to that, it was two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, and what is happening from a demographic people perspective, um, and in quite some detail. I will tell you that we've had demographic studies done, at least one, maybe two, over the last ten years, and they've all been wrong, meaning they predicted a certain, certain population, uh, for Wareham, especially specifically of students, and it didn't happen. And this isn't just school choice. Actually, the biggest impact on Wareham has been a reduction in the number of, of children that are here to be educated, uh, in addition to school choice and children's schools, et cetera. So, uh, I will summarize, um, some of the salient points, um, for everybody, uh, about this, what this demographer had to say. Uh, the first thing you should know is, he was, he's a demographer for the whole country. He finds it absolutely remarkable, the size of our school districts. The most of the rest of the country, the school districts are ten times. They obviously have far fewer school districts, so the fact that we have as much local representation as a part of the education of our children is actually quite unusual. Uh, he talked about school districts and where he studied the demography, where the school district was two hundred and fifty thousand kids in one school district, and this wasn't New York City, it was just out Midwest somewhere. You should also know that the birth rates across the country are at the lowest, they've basically been on record, even lower than they were during the Great Depression. So, we are aging, uh, and that in many respects is not a good thing. Uh, it's also a political thing, but from the point of view of the schools, the data does show up, and I'll explain a little bit more why. Uh, overall, uh, the Cape and Islands, including Wareham, uh, is shrinking, um, and has been shrinking for about one percent a year. Uh, but that's sort of like, you know, the old, the old analogy of the frog in the frying pan. You know, you don't feel it much, right, but it happens every single year, and you start to feel that inexorable loss of families and kids. Uh, I could frankly talk a long time about this, I would condense this, to say the first chart he presented, um, was the age structure of the Cape and Islands compared to the rest of Massachusetts. Uh, a square of a hundred means your average for the entire state of Massachusetts, so keep that in mind. The overall Cape and Islands is much, has far fewer, uh, less than eighteen-year-olds than the rest of Massachusetts, so seventy-seven with an average of a hundred. Uh, the good news is Wareham actually is pretty close to the average at ninety-six, so seventy-seven, twenty-three points lower than the average from Massachusetts, Wareham at ninety-six, and then the rest of Massachusetts at the, at the, at the hundred level. If you move up the, if you move up the age category, uh, Wareham is always just a little bit better than the overall Cape and Islands. Uh, the Cape and Islands, eighteen to twenty-four was sixty-nine, now we're seventy-one, a little closer, a little bit more, a little bit younger. Seventy-nine to sixty-three for, Cape is sixty-three for twenty-six to thirty-four. I won't read these all, all of these numbers, they are on the website if you're curious about demographics. Uh, the one thing that really stood out is that, keep in mind, the average is a hundred, the Cape and Islands for over sixty-five, and I don't take this personally, is a hundred and eighty-four. So it's almost twice as old as the overall state of Massachusetts. The good news, Wareham is only a hundred and twenty-four. So it's, it's still older than the average, uh, for, for the state of Massachusetts, but it's nowhere near the Cape, which is at one eighty-four. Uh, if we move on to the aging trends from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, here the demographer literally says, okay, this is what it was in two thousand ten, what is it like in two thousand seventeen? Has it gotten better or has it gotten worse? Once again, Wareham is a little bit better, but the numbers overall, uh, we're, we were fifteen percent older than the average, um, for Massachusetts in two thou- excuse me, eighteen percent, um, Cape and Islands. We're now twenty-three percent, so we've gone from eighteen percent older on average to twenty-three percent older on average. The good news is Wareham is only fifteen percent, uh, so that's a little bit better than the overall state. Overall, uh, we're just, we're just getting older, even over those last seven years, the trend is not good, uh, unless of course you're an old person that haven't died, you feel good about that, right? Uh, but in terms of education, which is why this demographer did this, it means that there's a lot of schools that are closing, and it's far worse on the Cape than it is in Wareham specifically, far worse. Uh, and I'll get to some of those numbers, uh, as well. And then finally, there, there's a chart that I, that is on the website that compares the number of children, uh, as a percent of total residents, okay? So, we've got all residents, what percent are kids? Uh, in two thousand ten, I'll just give you the, the, the two numbers on either end. In two thousand ten, uh, Wareham had twenty percent of its kids, of its, uh, of its residents were eighteen or under, okay? Uh, that's twenty percent. The, the, all of Massachusetts was almost twenty-two percent, uh, but the Cape was seventeen and a half percent. They don't sound like big differences, but when you multiply those percentages times big numbers, they result in a lot of kids. Uh, the bad news is that seventeen and a half percent for the Cape and Islands dropped to fifteen percent. So it went from seventeen and a half percent of the residents being children, it's down to fifteen percent. At the same time, Massachusetts went from nineteen to twenty-one to nineteen, and Wareham went, uh, went from, uh, twenty to eighteen point nine. Once again, a little bit better, Wareham is a little bit better than the rest of the Cape and Islands. Uh, I know this is, would be much better if it was visual, uh, but I'll give you just a few more things to think about. One of the things the demographer said about the overall Wareham, Cape and Islands area was that we are really struggling, and that's why I was really pleased with this good news about the police academy. Turns out that if you live on the Cape and you want to, uh, and you've gone to school on the Cape, and you've, and you've now come back and you want to get a job on the Cape, then you, you're going to struggle to find a job, but your larger struggle is in fact not finding a job. Your larger struggle is now that you've found a job, where are you going to live? And the, the percentage of dwellings is rising in the, in Cape, but the percentage of households, i.e. where people actually live full-time, is declining rapidly. And that is, that means that these young people who are looking for places to live are saying. And that is, that means that these young people who are looking for places to live are saying, buy, and they're leaving. And that's the biggest reason, according to this demographer, that Cape's schools are shrinking. There's no place for family, young families, childbearing age, to live, and so they leave. It's a, now, why is this happening? It's pure economics. People look and see how much they can get for a dwelling, if they, if they rent it out for a seasonal period of time, a month, two months, whatever, and they say, I'm better off using it for that purpose than living in it. So a lot of the homes that are being built are actually being built for seasonal occupancy. So that's the fundamental problem. However, once again, Wareham is a little better off. Just a few more numbers, and then I'll talk about what the legislators had to say. The overall, for Cape and Islands total, households represent only fifty-four percent of the dwellings. So literally, almost half of the dwellings are seasonally rented. That's a big part of the reason. However, for Wareham, it's seventy-two percent. So we have a much better chance of these police officers being able to stay in town than if they were trying to be a police officer in Turo or a province town, especially, this is particularly true the further onto the Cape you go. The change from 2010 to 2017, we're actually slightly positive, but the overall Cape was almost one percent negative in terms of the actual number of residents. So once again, Wareham a little bit better. Finally, I'll give you one more statistics, then there's a lot more that you can read on the website. The standard across, standard across Massachusetts, I want to make sure I've got this right, and it's not the whole country, is, yeah, it would be the, it would be Massachusetts, I believe. Think of it, the standard is five hundred children per thousand dwellings, okay? Five hundred children per thousand dwellings is the standard across Massachusetts. Wareham is three hundred and thirty, so significantly below the, the average for Massachusetts. The Cape and Islands, two hundred and thirteen. Literally, less than half of the average for Massachusetts. And there are towns, province town is forty-two, with an average of five hundred, okay? So there are towns that are really struggling in terms of maintaining a population of young people. I'll pause there. Once again, I apologize for the graphics. And before I get on to the legislators, any questions, comments that people want to share? It sort of is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is, but it's, it's, it's interesting. So if you go to that chart, the one with the, the Cape and Islands versus all Mass. children as a percentage of total residents, and you know, Cape and Islands is lower, but it's, it's fairly parallel, right? It, it, it's consistent with the, with the state, right?
Yes.
But what's interesting, I, I think it was two separate documents, if you want, you have this chart?
Yes, I do.
And so that one focuses on Wareham specifically, and you see Wareham versus all Mass. children as a percentage of total residents, and you see it just nosedive in 2012 and thirteen and fourteen, and then come right back up. And that's, that's what I mean, that, that was, that was the failed override, and everybody realizing that, you know, that we weren't investing in education.
But I don't believe that this is graphing the students in the school, it's the students in the town.
Right, exactly.
But people, I know people that moved. I mean, I know people that moved out of state, you know, to Maine, in other places.
Yeah, I, I looked at that chart, and one of the things, if you'll notice, one of the bullets there was, however, data may not properly reflect, reflect what actually happened in 2012 to 2014. Now, that's what the demographer's saying. You can't explain the huge dip, okay? But I agree with you, I looked at it. On the other hand, what I really liked was Wareham as a, as a community jumped up to basically mirror Massachusetts.
Yeah.
And I've had, this is pure anecdotes, but I've had, I've had mothers, more than fathers, because I interact with mothers more, say to me, they really feel good about what's happening in Wareham, and this, and this data tends to say that if that really was a legitimate two percent drop in the percent of children in our households, then we fully recover, and that's really nice. And we recovered literally, basically, in a year, which is why the demographer thinks must, must be something wrong. But it is what it is, and, and even if, even if that line should be smoothed out, we were almost two first, full percentage points below the state average in 2010, and now we're with very close to the state average within a few tenths of a percent. So that's also good news for Wareham. Anything else? Okay, so legislators, and there were about, let's say, seven or eight legislators there. Some of them were relatively new, some of them had a lot of seniority. And the way it works is, they all get up and they do their spiel, and then they take questions. The difference between this time and the prior decade is, as one senior legislator put it, the train has left the station with respect to education, foundation budget changes. And it's just a question of whether you want to get on the, on the train. And what she meant by that was, the problem with, with making a change to the foundation budget, which candidly, MASC, having been on the board of directors for quite a while, has been focused on for a long time, and they were actively involved in the Foundation Budget Review Commission. The problem is, if you change the budget, the foundation process, the formula, and you don't have more money, then all you end up with is some people screaming butter murder, and other people saying hooray. In other words, it's the classic zero-sum game. You've just made a lot of people unhappy and a lot of people happy, and you can understand why the legislators don't really want to do that. Nevertheless, it's very clear from the commission that there are four fundamental problems with the formula. The most obvious has to do with special education. They didn't adjust the inflation rate, and the result is that there's not nearly enough money to educate the kids and the increasing number of kids that require special services. The other thing that's very obvious from the review is that there's not enough money to pay the health insurance costs for the employees who are employed by school districts. There's also issues of English as a learner's, there's also English issues related to low income, and, and other, and children at risk in all those areas. But the two big ones are special education and health insurance premiums. The good news is that appears, and I say appears, and I underline that, that they're going to try and fix those two and hope for the best on the other, on the rest of those things. Now, I say the good news is because I think they have enough money to make everybody happier about special education and healthcare premiums. What she meant by the train moving, however, was this problem of, depending on how they tinker with the, the whole formula, you could have winners and losers. So one of the legislators literally said, would anybody like to be on a working group to help, to make sure that the Cape and Islands and Wareham doesn't get hurt as compared to helped by the, by this statewide change? Never having been bashful and knowing these representatives, I immediately turned to the, I used to be the chair of Division Seven, as a, as a, as a twelve thirty-one, I was no longer. But I turned to the new person, and I said, we got to do this. So there is now a working group, working with our legislators, to make sure that the Cape and Islands and Wareham get what it, get at least its portion of whatever increase or whatever change is going to happen. I can't give you any results on that working group yet, but at least it exists, and we're going to be working very hard to make sure that Wareham gets its fair share of whatever additional money is available. And equally importantly, to make sure the formula isn't changed so that it, so that it helps Weston and hurts Wareham, shall we say. Now, I will tell you one little fact which is not well-known and not well-appreciated. The foundation formula is literally a mathematical formula, but there is an, an aspect to it which is absolutely political. And that is the fact that after the formula calculates what percentage of the money that the foundation requires for, and to educate a child in a community, after that is calculated, that determines what the town pays and what the, and what the state pays. Unless, the formula actually has a number that is lower than seventeen and a half percent. Now, don't ask me where the seventeen and a half percent came from, because I'm sure it was a negotiation between a variety of legislators and Desley and the governor, et cetera, et cetera. But what it means is that there are communities that literally might only need ten percent, according to the foundation budget formula, but in fact, they're getting seventeen and a half percent, and it's pure politics. So I have no idea what's going to happen to that seventeen and a half percent, but that would be a great source of money for communities that actually need it as compared to communities that are just getting it because they screamed and yelled about the fact that they're, just because they're rich doesn't mean they shouldn't get at least day eight, and that's really what it comes down to. All I can tell you is stay tuned, and MASC and myself are working hard to see what we can do to protect Wareham from whatever changes are made, and hopefully benefit. But the good news is, to end on a positive note, I really believe special education is going to be well taken care of, and I'm also optimistic about health insurance premiums.
So I have one more question. Does this data that you presented about population, does that relate to the discussion of the budget with the legislature?
No. I will, well, I will tell you something that I assume everyone in the committee knows. As we shrink, another budget, so the committee knows this, we're now harmless, because the, the percentage of our fixed cost is so high that unless you start closing schools, which we have done, it's really hard to absorb the loss of kids. That's one thing you should be aware of. So, no, because they're already calling us harmless, I don't think they care that much about that. And, yes, that is good. The one thing I will, I will also add, which is, which is not, which is public knowledge, but we, there used to be a formula that said, if you lose a kid to charter schools, the first, you get a hundred percent of that loss back in terms, in reimbursement from the state, and every year after that, for that same child, you get a twenty percent. So it adds up to two hundred percent, five years is twenty, first year is a hundred. They have changed, the governor at least has changed it, and the assumption is the legislature will go along with it. They've changed that formula, so it's now going to be a hundred sixty forty. In other words, you'll, you'll get more in the first three years. The bad news is, it still only adds up to two hundred percent, and after three years, you get nothing. So I'll leave it to Susan. Susan's, you know, smiling, saying, I'm not sure exactly this is good news or not, but it does mean, it does mean if you get a kid back, okay, or if you lose them for only three years, then you're getting much better reimbursement over that three-year period of time. Does that make sense, Susan? Yes? Okay. Did it make sense to the rest of the committee?
Yeah, now, that hasn't taken effect, that's just being discussed.
This is proposed for 2020.
Like, what's my question?
Yeah, um, in your opinion, what do you think killed the reform last year? Like, why didn't it pass with so much support and momentum?
Oh, boy. I'm going to choose my words carefully, because...
I'll let it out, come on.
No, no, no. I, I don't think it's in, I don't think it's in Wareham's best interest to start naming specific legislators and things like that. I will tell you that there are three bills right now that exist. One is the governor's, one is the House, and one is the Senate. But the Senate bill was actually put forth without the approval of the Senate president. And that's not a way to influence friends and influence people, right? The belief now is that none of the three bills are going to pass, and that it's, and that's why the train is leaving the station and the working group makes sense, because there's still a lot of things that could happen between now and the beginning of the fiscal year. But the short answer to your question is, there wasn't enough agreement between the House and the Senate, and there wasn't enough agreement between the two co-chairs of the Education Committee. Now...
Yeah, where did the disagreements, you know, reside mostly? Like, what was, what was the sticking points?
Urban versus suburban and rural.
It wasn't special ed?
No, no. Now, I will also tell you that those two individuals have been replaced. So the two co-chairs of the Education Committee, one from the House and one from the Senate, are brand-new people, and it's not clear how that's going to go, except that the, the three bills that exist are considered dead on arrival, and they're all going to be adjusted, and that's why it's important for Wareham to have whatever rule we can have, and making sure that, and our legislators want to hear from us, that's the good news.
And, and I didn't know it, but I guess you were there in Bedford where Dr. Shaverwood was presenting?
Yes.
And we, we, were you there the whole time toward the end?
Yes.
And did you hear the, I forget the legislator's name, the, the woman where she, she got offended by some of the people speaking at that panel, that they said that basically they kicked the can down the road or something like that. And I, and I didn't get up, and I should have got up and said, listen, you know, if, if you did kick the can down the road, and if you didn't, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about it with more scheduled, you know, appearances to come by, from the superintendents and the teachers and everybody else.
The, the reason I say it wasn't special, it wasn't special ed is because there is a way, without changing the formula, to help in special ed. The special ed was supposed to have been funded at seventy-five percent after four times the average annual. Everyone knows this extremely well. It's been a long time. When was the last time it was at seventy-five percent, Melissa?
Before my time.
Before your time, right?
It's twenty, it's been twenty years.
Right, it's been mid, mid sixty percent. I guess it got to as high maybe as seventy-two at maybe one year. So if they actually lived up to the commitment they made when Circuit Breaker was created, it would make a huge difference, not only in terms of absolute dollars, but in terms of the ability of, of people like Melissa to, to budget and plan. So I think they may choose not to change the formula and just do a better job of funding the Circuit Breaker. And of course, health insurance premiums applies to every district, so they're not going to make anybody mad if they, if they loosen up that. So that's the reason I don't believe it's special ed. And I also believe that the Senate in particular cares deeply about special ed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will keep up updated.
Absolutely.
We'll move on to a discussion about our June ninth, I'm sorry, June sixth, 2019 meeting. That's the night of senior awards night at the high school. So we'll either need to reschedule or, or cancel that meeting. So I'm just looking to see how the rest of the members feel about that. We have a meeting two weeks prior and two weeks after that date.
So if we meet two weeks prior, we won't meet again for another month?
For a month, right.
Could be something.
Well, what we could do is, it, it's just June will be, it'll be hard. Like, the week before that is probably Memorial Day, and so what we could do is we could eliminate the meeting date now, and then when we get closer to that date, if we need to schedule a meeting, first or second week of July?
Yeah, you can do that. Does, does it have to be a Thursday? Can't it be like a Wednesday or something?
But we can't have it on another Thursday.
Yeah, probably go over there.
We could, we could, yes.
Senior Awards can start at seven, is that correct? If we had a shortened agenda, which it could easily be, and we started at six, we might be able to accomplish everything we want, and then everybody go over there, and it's a great event. It's one that I encourage everybody to attend. So that's, that's another, or, or five.
High School Library.
High School Library, you're not going to get any easier.
Okay.
Just a thought, just another, another option.
Yeah. No, that's a good thought.
So I guess, do you want, do you need a motion?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Um, no, I don't believe so, because I don't believe the original date was set by a vote.
Well, the whole calendar was set by a vote, I think, right?
The school committee meeting dates were not...
No, I think, we can figure out before then, but I think we did vote on it.
Um, yeah, I'll look into it, and if it requires a vote, we'll come back at the next meeting and have a vote. Yep, okay. Is there any other business? No? All I wanted to share is that, again, that the school building committee continues to meet, continues to work very hard, the working groups working very hard. So, I'm hoping that we'll have an update at a school committee meeting. Is that at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll have representatives from PMA and the architects here at the next meeting to give us all an update. Okay? All right, if there's nothing else, as per motion to adjourn, so...
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the votes abstained, 400. Thank you.